indicating serious safety concerns. New Hampshire DES recommends urgent repairs, vegetation removal, debris clearing, and updates to the dam operation, maintenance, and emergency action plan. Regular monitoring and possible reconstruction may be required to comply with state safety standards. So obviously, everything is being monitored and they're working behind the scenes to make sure that they're addressing any issues, but because it is located in our town and obviously affects our primary water body, we're being copied on this.
A small detail, on June 14th, the PLIA is having their annual meeting and Corey Clark, that person who wrote that letter, is going to be addressing their, if you'd like, if anyone wants to come to consult.
Thank you, Steve. So June 14th, PLIA will be meeting and Corey Clark, the engineer for the dam, will be present.
Yeah. He's the guest speaker.
Okay. DES also issued a letter regarding drowned dike. In summary, DES conducted a dam safety inspection of the dam and dike system May 2nd. The inspection identified significant deficiencies leading to a poor condition rating and a likely reclassification of all structures as high hazard. Key issues include structural concerns, vegetative growth, erosion, seepage, debris accumulation, and outdated maintenance and emergency plans. DES urges prompt corrective action and ongoing monitoring to ensure the dam's safety and regulatory compliance. So again, these are all affected. SRPC sent another email on 5/28 regarding their municipal dues. They send out this appropriation based on the town's population. It was based on the 2023 survey of population and that appropriation was calculated out of $6,856.18. This was originally part of the planning board's proposed budget, but it was removed due to having to meet the 4% tax cap, so we actually don't have funding for being a dues-paying member to the SRPC. I am going to plan, per their letter, to inform them that funding was not appropriated, unless otherwise advised. I don't know if you want to look at the budget and see if you can find that, but...
So I did ask the lady at SRPC that presented to us, I emailed her afterwards. Oh, actually, sorry, it was presented at the planning board meeting, it was at the planning board meeting. And, um, because I didn't want to bring it up in front of the planning board, but I specifically requested, what does membership actually mean for us specifically? And she said she started drafting something when I saw her work for something and hadn't finished it. I still haven't seen anything, so I don't feel horrible if we don't become a member.
Okay.
What's this board?
Stratford Regional Planning Commission to be a dues-paying member.
Oh, yes.
It gives us two seats of voting membership on their, their board meetings for active involvement. In addition to that, there are certain perks, like the land use law books that come out annually. Those are usually included, they're, they're covered. Outside of that, they're about a hundred dollars a piece. We usually order them for each planning board, zoning board member, just to be updated with the land, the local land use regulations. There, there is a list of perks that I think we've...
It has to do, some of it has to do with some of the grant work, but, you know, it...
We still have access.
Huh?
We still have access.
We still have access and all that. I mean, actually, I'm a little surprised that, you know, I'm, I guess I'm assuming that prices will probably have to go up with them anyway because of the state funding is, is lost.
Right.
But, yeah. But it's, it's, you know, all I did was ask for a simple, you know, what do we get out of our membership? Just be clear so that I can say recommend or not recommend. At this point, I can't do either because I don't know, so...
Okay, so I will reach out to Jen at SRPC.
Yeah, who's Jen?
I know Jen's, okay. And see if I can get that information. I, I remember seeing correspondence from a few years back where they kind of outlined the same scenario when there was question as to whether or not we were going to continue to fund it.
And I think there's a discount on services as well.
Right, right. There's a discount on services, but really, I mean, how much and whatever, you know, it's just, it was not, you know, that's all I was asking for is like what...
I know, I, yeah. I mean, I would tend to, I, I would like to look at it further, like you do too, because I, we don't live in a vacuum and I do like the idea of having votes on a regional planning. I think that is, potentially has a lot of value right there, but...
Especially with the newer planning boards.
Still have one, we still get one person, actually, we still get people going, but they just don't get to vote.
Right. And they do, for example, on the master planning, participate, they start vote, but that, but that's their contract.
The master plan is internal for us.
Right.
Well, I'd be interested in seeing that information too.
Okay, so I...
And then the breakdown of the new costs, because it, it might go to the point where
Right, exactly.
Membership may be the cheaper option.
Yes, exactly.
Right. Yeah, because right now they're adjusting it based on the CPI index, but if they've lost the state funding in addition to that, it could be a significant increase that we're looking at.
Right, because I think it starts either July 1st or June 1st.
Yeah, fiscal year.
Right, okay.
Okay. Courtney, our recreation director, has sent a memo dated Friday, May 30th, and it's regarding Marston Farm Recreational Area. The FONPAR, which is Friends of Nottingham Parks and Recreation, is actively pursuing a land-water conservation fund grant that will help them continue with some improvements over at Marston Recreational Complex. What she's done is she's provided you with a memo to digest over the next two weeks as well as an updated conceptual of what they're looking to apply for. It was too soon for her to really come forward to this meeting, just with the public hearing scheduled and short notice, so I suggested that we could put this on as an agenda item and, again, allow you time to digest and formulate some opinions on what you would like to see for conceptual plan for Marston. What she's done is she's taken the one that was drafted initially when the golf fields were put in and locked it up a little bit, so. There isn't an active Marston Recreation Subcommittee like there was in the past, so ultimately, it would be upon your advice as to how you would like to see it proceed.
Did she give you any idea of how much?
When was the deadline on that application?
Um, I believe it's coming up in the next couple of weeks.
So do we have time to wait?
We do.
Okay, there was my...
June 28th for the letter of intent, yes.
Okay.
Did she give you any idea of how much the grant was for?
No.
It's not long.
It's not long.
Could be different values depending on what...
What they're seeking.
Sure. But I didn't know if we're talking about, you know, 10,000 or half a million.
I can make sure that she's prepared to present that to you on the 16th.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Okay.
Any free money is willing to, we should be willing to grab.
Oh, definitely.
No matter how much it is.
Yeah, even a dollar.
Free money is free money.
You know, how ambitious can we be?
As long as somebody's willing to write it.
And last week, we got an email from Charlotte Fife on behalf, oh, I'm sorry.
So the Friends of the Rec Group, I think they have some grant writer people?
They do.
Okay, good.
I, I'm not sure how, what they have for background and qualifications, but they are eager to submit this application.
Okay, because there's other people in town that do have some grant writing experience that maybe they can specifically reach out to as well.
In particular, the people that assisted with the same grant for the water quality studies, maybe?
Maybe partially some of them and...
I will let Courtney know to reach out to you for appropriate contact.
I think there's, isn't somebody on Budget Committee or something that...
Me and Jill, Jill and I.
Yeah, Jill and I.
The Articles of Corporation.
And I know Lori Nickerson had started the process.
Yeah.
And Laura Hilbert is also inexperienced.
Yeah, there's lots of people who have...
Are the people librarians, maybe?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
Yes, Amanda Stevens, Assistant Director.
Okay, so, yeah, just try and kind of, even if it's just review.
Mm-hmm. And then Charlotte Fife on behalf of the Newsletter Committee emailed on May 30th. The next newsletter deadline is coming up this Friday, June 6th. I'm preparing something to put in there, but I didn't know if you had any topics or announcements that you would like me to include in this next edition, because we all know that communication is key and this is a great way for us to...
Mine was in my mailbox when I got home today, so...
Excellent.
The beach is open. The first edition looked terrific.
It did, looked nice.
Thank you. It was a little slim, but we're getting there, we're getting it.
It's a start. So did you have anything in particular? If you would like to email me over the next couple of days as I'm kind of compiling thoughts and quick updates on stuff that's happening around the town office.
And then when do we, if the deadline is there, when do, when do you expect it to be?
July 1st, it should be in mailboxes.
Okay. That just makes a difference too, like what we have coming up for town stuff.
It's going to come in July and August.
Exactly, yeah. It's a little tricky, but definitely the changes in here and if we're going to invite people in to take a look at the, some of the reconstruction.
And we'll have, we'll have Nottingham, we'll have the National Night coming up on August 5th, so that would be a good time to kind of announce it out there.
Oh, to open up, well, that's a good idea.
Open up for a community event.
That's a good idea.
Write something about the alarm wall.
Too late.
It'll be after that.
No, 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 I mean, for what? Like a recap?
A recap?
Well, if it's very short. We're moving on.
Well, okay, because it's, it's June 7th.
Right. Saturday.
The deadline's June 6th. This is how we think it's going to happen.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I know, this is...
The talking rain.
Oh, yes.
Again.
Oh, I can't believe it.
So that is it for my report this week.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and you have public hearing at 7:00, so we're right on time.
So it is 7:00. We are at the public hearing for the PREPA grant award acceptance. So...
The orange folder has all of the public hearing stuff in it.
Okay. Same thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, time is 7:00, June 2nd. So the Nottingham Select Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to RSA 31:95-B to consider the acceptance of 25,000 in unanticipated funds awarded through the 2025-2026 Piscataqua Region Environmental Planning Assessment PREPA Grant. This grant, provided by the Piscataqua Region Estuaries Partnership, PREP, was applied for to support the update of the Town of Nottingham's natural resources inventory maps and the natural resources chapter of its master plan. The Select Board will hold the public hearing in conjunction with the regularly scheduled meeting at, uh, June 2nd, which is today, at 7:00 at the Nottingham Community Center.
Oh, I had 7:15 on there, didn't I?
Yeah, it says 7:15 on that thing.
Oh, we're going to have to hold off.
We gotta wait, we gotta wait.
Time out.
Can I read the other one?
You can read it, but that was not until 7:30.
That was not until 7:30.
We're not doing the appointments yet.
Okay, Matt, I just want to speak on that one. I'm on the master plan committee.
I can't even let you speak on it, because we're not doing it for another 13 minutes.
For 15 minutes, at least, Steve.
We got to do, I think, we were doing the parking instead.
Can't do that until...
We're going to run through, we can't even do the pub, the parking one is at 7:30, the PREPA one will be at 7:15. You get to hear me read it again. But what we're going to jump to is assessing, we'll move through that pretty quickly so that we can at least get that accomplished, so. Somebody want to start with assessing?
Go for it.
Okay.
Make them... Get it easy today, you and Charlotte.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the warrant for the yield tax levy, MAP 76, Lot 2.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the certification of yield tax assessed and the warrant of yield tax levy, both for MAP 32, Lot 18.
And I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And motion to accept the certification of yield taxes assessed for MAP 32, Lot 22.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And to approve the intent to cut wood or timber on MAP 32, Lot 18, Lot 22, and Lot 23.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And moving along, acceptance of warrant for yield tax levy, MAP 32, Lot 22.
Second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And how about a certification of yield taxes assessed and a warrant for yield tax levy on MAP 32, Lot 23.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have an abatement request for the 2025 interest waiver on MAP 6, Lot 15.
And I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so assessing's been completed. So for reviewing action items from last meeting, we still had the voluntary change of address for the Raymond Road. Says it's ready for action finally. Think we can accomplish that in 10 minutes. Just add in...
All right. You're live on Channel 22. Oh.
Wow!
Well, hello Nottingham.
Oh, I did see that, okay.
Interesting.
It just popped up?
It did, yeah. I didn't even, I saw you looking at that.
A little bit of a delay, but...
I don't know where it's recording from, because we're clearly streaming from YouTube, so.
Oh, that's a little creepy.
Up there goes.
Back.
It's nice if the pictures, I mean, you did have a picture.
Yeah.
I wasn't here last week.
No, no. Still decorating.
Still decorating.
Okay, so we have two application for a voluntary change of address. This is due to the new subdivision that's going in across from Nottingham Sand and Gravel. The application is to go from 209 Raymond Road and 215 Raymond Road to 3 Spruce Peak and 2 Spruce Peak, respectively. So not much more to say about that. This was, their frontage has been changed onto Spruce Peak, so that must mean that the first building permits have been applied for, for the, the new subdivision. And with that, they were just trying to get ahead so that they can get their numbers in and then they can start getting all their mail and...
If it's from Raymond Road to Spruce Peak?
Yes.
They're just going to turn the mailboxes, there's not a whole lot to it, it's just...
You're actually doing a lot of construction here.
Right, but their driveways don't even come down onto Raymond Road anymore, they've been, they've been consumed by the new access road and placed somewhere there. So is there any discussion? So, so it'd be MAP 69, Lot 19, MAP 69, Lot 16.
And that's a motion, I'll second it.
So you, I will let somebody make a motion, we can do one at a time.
Do you want to make a motion? Or you want me to make a motion?
Don't make the motion.
All right.
So you got the paper in your hand.
All right. I make a motion that, um, application for change address from 209 Raymond Road to 3 Spruce Peak for emergency responders to easily locate the property is approved. MAP 69, Lot 19.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I will make a motion to approve the application for change of address, number from 215 Raymond Road to 2 Spruce Peak for emergency, emergency responders to easily locate the property. MAP 69, Lot 16.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, finally take her...
Get that, get off.
Getting off our list, it's been on there for a while.
Yeah, since December, so that's done there.
Quite a road up through there.
Boy, yeah.
I haven't driven all the way up there. Yeah.
I've hiked it, it's, it's, it goes much better than I.
Uh, within the small amount of time we have remaining, I was going to look for general business. We have the special event license for the Purple Hope 5K. Yep. Do we want to do the policy update first before this? Or...
You can bring it up for discussion, you have the ability to, I mean, it's within your authority if you would like to waive based on the policy discussion, but it is not the applicant's request to waive the fee, it's just, you know, based on what Skip Severance is always going to review.
Just looking at the time we had available, we can at least approve this.
Sure.
And then approve this.
We have six minutes.
So we have the special event license for the second annual Purple Hope 5K. This is a pancreatic cancer walk-run. It would be going, the event location would be Flutter Street, Dwight Road, Deerfield Road. The event date is October 5th with the approximate times of 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. I mean, I believe it had very good attendance last year and with zero issues, and I can relate, no traffic issues, no...
The police were involved for details, there was an ambulance, I actually think there was two ambulances.
Where did you go from, where, where, where?
Flutter Street?
Flutter Street, Dwight Road, and Deerfield Road, and then I think back down Flutter Street back to the, um...
Highway Garage.
Correct, the Highway Garage. It starts and stops at the Highway Department. Do we have any discussion here? So just, uh...
Approving this first, right?
Yeah, we're just basically approving the special event license.
All right. So they have proof of insurance, 14 days, license fees, $50, place detailed coverage, EMS coverage, portable toilet. Okay. They have everything they need, I believe.
Start will be in place prior to...
Right, right, exactly. All right, so I make a motion to, um, well, do we want to discuss waiving the, the $50 fee?
Is that part of this or separate?
It's separate.
It's part of the licensing requirement?
Yep. Uh, we can either, on a one-off basis, do that now, because this, the policy review is going to be effective, this, if we do the change today, it would be effective today anyway. So there's not like a timestamp that this happened before.
Okay, all right, so that's what I was...
Right. I don't think we're, it's too much of a car before, of course.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the special event license for the Purple Hope 5K pancreatic cancer walk-run on Sunday, for, for Sunday, October 5th, 2025, approximate times 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. So, what I want to get into right now before that next part, where's the email? That's... Uh, to go along with the special event, we were going to review the special events licensing There was a email from Skip Severance in town, just kind of looking and wondering if that for special events licensing could be waived for events that are in a, excuse me, I just balked at, what, for the nonprofits, any type of nonprofits or anything like that, so...
Well, I think his email specifically said for Nottingham charities and not specifically nonprofits, but...
Well, it says, he was talking about licensing fee could be waived if the proceeds from an event making it a nonprofit benefited a Nottingham charity. Do you want me to read his particular policy or just we want to review it and see if there's anything we think we should add?
Yeah, I feel like his wording was, should be tweaked a little bit, because I don't know if the pancreatic cancer is specifically Nottingham, but it's certainly a worthy cause.
I think he was looking at, like, if a place was going to send that, like, they're holding an event and they weren't looking to necessarily maintain the proceeds, but it would go to maybe the Nottingham Food Pantry or donate it to the library or anything.
Well, it is really specifically Nottingham.
That's what he's looking for the proceeds of. We were potentially looking at, do we want to look at if, if such as this, like, one's different?
This event was originally to raise awareness based on a Nottingham resident who was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer.
Nonprofit itself is not a Nottingham charity, but it's a nonprofit, which I would...
Change one way, but we were talking about, maybe we could all, you know, thought, like, maybe we could change it to the, if it's just generally a nonprofit in town, there's not a ton of these events that pop up and they want to...
He said here to include nonprofits, said all license fees shall be waived if 100% of the proceeds from the event benefit a Nottingham charity.
Correct.
Or a nonprofit.
I'll let you think on that, so we're going to roll back into our previous topic.
Shift papers.
Yep.
Shift pages.
So in case anybody is just chiming in right now and wasn't listening before, Nottingham Select Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to RSA 31:95, $10 in unanticipated funds awarded through the 2025-2026 Piscataqua Region Environmental Planning Assessment PREPA Grant. This grant, provided by the Piscataqua Region, was applied for to support the update of the Town of Nottingham's natural resources inventory maps and the natural resources chapter of its master plan. Select Board will hold this public hearing in conjunction with the regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, June 2nd, 2025, at 7:15 PM, which it finally is.
I'm on the planning, I'm on that committee.
You can now speak, Steve.
I can now speak.
All right.
It's a good idea.
Can you come up to the microphone, Steve?
Or can we, please?
Or we can bring the microphone to you.
That one's not the one we're using, John.
It can work.
It can?
Well, because we're, we're broadcasting, so...
Hello, everybody. Steve Soff, Nottingham Road. I'm on the planning board, or the planning board master plan update committee, and this further advances the work of that committee. We've got one grant to do housing, and this provides another dimension to the work that that committee is doing. And this, I think one of the things that we are most impressed with is the rural beauty of this town and its natural resources, and this will strengthen our position to be able to acknowledge it.
Thank you, Steve. And the, um, the natural resources inventory maps, those are the ones along here in the hall, correct, Ellen, which haven't been updated since...
2011.
2011, so a lot of between developments, different things have changed, they would just, helps highlight where things are for questions. How long do we hold the public hearing open for?
Comments are done.
Not receive any advance correspondence.
So shall I go ahead?
We have no attendees.
Of course we do. We received our public hearing.
Right, you're right, other than, yeah, we have additional, no, unregular attendees.
Yeah.
And by the way, Tim's also on that, he's your liaison to that committee.
Correct.
Did any of you as individual members have any?
Steve, what was your comment earlier?
Did I have a comment earlier?
About free money.
Yeah, I don't think we should ever turn away free money.
Oh, yes, you're exactly right.
I agree 100%.
So shall I go ahead and make a motion?
Sure.
All right. I can delay it just a little bit further. Stratford Regional has offered assistance for the, um, the... I can delay it just a little bit further. Stratford Regional has offered assistance for the paperwork end of it. It would, you know, it'd be less administrative end on the town, so they're gonna handle that end of it for us. So everything is going to be going through them. They were the ones that originally applied for it with the town's support.
That's awesome.
And their support has been very helpful.
Absolutely.
Yeah, which is why I wanna really discuss the membership thing.
That's great news.
Just quickly, do we do a roll call vote on this one, or can we do a committee vote on this one?
You should do a roll call vote, make it official.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the Piscataqua Region Environmental Planning Assessment PREPA grant award in the amount of $25,000 to complete an update to the Town of Nottingham's Natural Resources Inventory Maps and Natural Resources Master Plan Chapter.
And the crawls went wild.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call vote.
Aye, Steve Walsh.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, Matt Sherlin.
Aye, Charlotte Fith.
Excellent. First public hearing is complete.
Alright, now we got ten more minutes to go.
We can continue discussing our thoughts on the special event licensing while we're kinda waiting, just open discussion. Thoughts about, do we wanna have it just be kinda as Skip said, I mean, right now, the licensing is. If the attendance is expected to be 1 to 99, there's no licensing fee. If it's 100 to 499, it's a fifty dollar per day licensing fee, and if it's 500 plus, it's a 100 dollars per day licensing fee. And any other licensing fees just go right to general fund.
Correct.
So, not huge fees, you know, depending, I'm sure that the something larger like the Platacross event, they're bringing in enough that the 1 to 2 hundred dollars that they're paying is, they're fine with just paying that to the town.
Hundred dollars per three events per year.
Per day, so it's, right, so there's usually scheduled over two to three days.
Two days.
But again, they keep their profit. If we were looking at some of these other smaller events, you know.
Right.
I feel like the pancreatic one, they're already kinda making some, they're taking some of their profit to make giveaways and advertising and stuff to kinda draw people to it, to make the event, you know, I don't think. We stand to gain much by requiring the fifty dollars, but for this particular one, if it, you know, were to be bigger. Not real sure.
I'm perfectly fine with waiving fees for, you know, nonprofits, and, you know, especially if they do benefit the local community. I mean, it doesn't have to be a local nonprofit to benefit the community.
As long as it's legally recognized 503(c), I'd like to see something added in there that they would be waived.
Yeah.
Any legally recognized nonprofit. I mean, we don't, we don't need that fifty dollars definitely for a nonprofit, right?
Right, and of course, community events that are sponsored by the town don't pay it anyways, so.
Right, I mean, it's not a source of income for it.
It is not a source.
Do you?
So, his suggestion is all license fees shall be waived if a hundred percent of the proceeds from the event benefit a Nottingham charity. Charlotte, you would like to add, or legally recognized nonprofit, 501(c)(3) nonprofit?
So where do we put that in, after the table?
I believe.
Yeah, or are waived, if it's down under the table, of fees, or are waived and.
I would put it before.
License fees are waived.
Because you're talking about the submission, the review, and the issuance.
So, in, under the fees section?
Section six.
Section six, right. So like the first sentence under section six?
Yes.
And what's our wording coming up with?
Well, maybe we can, if we put everything together with Ellen, let her put it together, and then we could have the final review and input, like, once we see it all.
Okay.
That way we can.
You can act on it at the next meeting.
Yep.
Right, that way we can kinda, in case there was like a cut pace there or something like that, too, we can catch it before we say we're good. Licensing requirement, application procedure review.
And did Skip had something about letting a butter, I'm not sure how he worded it, sorry, a butters, whether they should be notified or not?
So, under section B, under the staff and select board review, it says, any, under I subsection B, any abutter or affected party may appeal the issuance of a license so issued if the regular select board meeting schedule permits. He's saying, it seems to me that the abutters and affected parties should have been listed as part of the application process and involved in the approval process. Involvement after the fact seems to be too late. So what happens is when you have an event that comes before you, which would be the larger events, because technically, myself and the affected departments can review and issue permit for events with expected attendance of less than a hundred per day. Anything over and above that, it goes on your agenda for action that evening. We don't do any official notification from anybody that may be impacted by the event. What we do is we give people the right to appeal your license, which you've already issued it, so then you have to retract. So do you want to require, I mean, if we have to hold a public hearing, we normally would do anywhere from five to fourteen days advance notice to the general public. Hey, this is coming up as a topic. If you'd like to come in and comment prior to the issuance, would you like to handle it? In that type of format?
I would feel comfortable with that.
Maybe somebody doesn't want us to hold National Night Out here with fireworks.
That, that's over here. That's a community event, that gets voted out.
Alright, so that was a bad example.
Shame on you.
That's right.
But you could do a public hearing.
The town administrator is authorized following.
Not necessarily have to hold the public hearing requirement, but put advance notice out to the public that we're going to be acting on this license and allow a typical public comment.
Put it on the town website.
So the abutter one is only for persons of less than a hundred, right? B, I, B, but I is for attendance of less than a hundred persons. Two, or double I, I'm not sure, the printing is not great. For events with expected attendance of more than 100, the town will provide with application material, staff recommendations for discussion at the next available meeting. Applicants are welcome and may be requested directly. So.
We could technically change that, I mean, remove my approval authority and just put them all before you for vote.
So if it's a hundred, if it's a hundred people, they basically have to come before us.
If it's less than a hundred, an abutter could say, hey, I don't like this, but it seems like if it's more than a hundred.
Then you have no say.
Well, if it's less than a hundred, I can approve the license and then just inform you that I approved the license, so it's coming to you after the fact.
Oh, I get it.
So, that's why the appeal process doesn't really make a lot of sense.
Right, but then there's really no, I guess, because of the one greater than a hundred, it'll be part of our meeting packet, and then they can show up and discuss it.
To make comment, huh?
But really not until after your action is taken, because your public comment is at the end of the meeting.
Well, that's right.
Correct.
So if we just change that process, maybe just have them all put through selectman's meeting agenda noticed out of time.
That's probably fine, I guess.
We should probably just change wording, too, like, not only is it the meeting, but, I mean, per anything, excuse me, the.
Or maybe we drop that to 50. And then, you know, we could keep the rates the same, but.
Do we have any events that have popped up between the less than 100?
Cruise night is probably the closest.
Okay. And the only time we really get involved with cruise night is if it closes down the.
Church Street.
Church Street. One C.
Yes, so I.
Sometimes different, but yeah.
Yeah, so I've been issuing that and then just notifying you.
So, I mean, what's, right, a hundred?
I would be cautious, because sometimes I think their attendance can vary, but there are nights where they would be close to a hundred, where all of a sudden we're gonna start throwing a fee onto.
Well, no, the fee, the fee's still.
Actually, it would potentially be going away, 'cause it's going to a charity, so.
Yeah, it's a Nottingham charity.
If we put it this other part, yeah. Alright, well, why don't you?
I'll draft up a couple of scenarios, and then you can act on it.
On the next meeting, and that way Tim will get a chance to throw his comments in. It is now 7:30. We're gonna move to the second public hearing, which is a segue. Alright, the Nottingham Select Board will hold a public hearing in accordance with RSA, and multiple RSA's, 31:39, 41:11, 47:17, XVIIII, not sure how we're supposed to pronounce, 18, are we supposed to say that it's 18?
Roman eighteen.
I know, but I don't know how it's supposed to be pronounced. RSA 265:69, RSA 262:32, RSA 231:132-A for discussion and to receive public input on proposed amendments to the ordinance of prohibited parking on public ways where signs are erected. The ordinance and proposed amendments are available to view at the Nottingham Town Office and online at www.notttingham-nh.gov. The public hearing will be held Monday, June 2nd at 7:30 PM at the Nottingham Town Office. Residents are encouraged to attend and comment. Written comments could have been submitted in advance. I will now open to public comment. Do you want me to read the current ordinance, or did you receive any prior?
I did not receive anything prior. So what I have provided you and the public with is a copy of the existing ordinance that was enacted on the fifth day of October, 2015, and a draft clean version. I just prettied it up a little bit, updated to make sure all reference from Board of Selectmen was updated to Select Board, and cleaned up the RSA language and just general verbiage, split it into sections, and tentatively updated the penalty, civil penalty from 25 dollars to 100 dollars as was discussed. We talked about scheduling this first of two required public hearings. Obviously, this document is a living document and change, we now in the next public hearing scheduled for June 16th, same time, same place. So, for discussion amongst you, or Steve being our only public member.
Now, wait, this doesn't count, are we gonna do it again on the 16th?
Yes. So because it is talking about a fine implementation, we're legally required to have two public hearings on the first.
Thank you.
So.
I have to say, I'm totally not in favor of a hundred dollar fee. I would have a hard time approving a fifty dollar fee. I don't think there's anything wrong with a 25 dollar fee.
The intent, so I believe, so the penalty here is moving it straight to a hundred. So we have section one, the authority, section two, no parking zones, section three is the permit parking zones, and then the penalty. I believe the no parking zones, and maybe this is written kinda this way, 'cause some of the no parking zones are around the Flutter Street Deer Field, but then there are also no parking if you look in front of the fire station, or even here in front of the community center, the right side of the road, depending on which way you're going, 152 North, the right side of the road has several no parking zones.
Up by Round Pond.
And then we allow parking on the south side, left-hand side, if you will, of 152. So, I believe, I mean, the big thing here is if, and what other communities have done, especially for the municipal facilities, it is supposed to be a deterrent. Like, if it is a 25 dollar fee, and you come up to the beach and you see the sign.
If I get a 25 dollar fee, I'm not gonna park there again.
Twenty-five dollars, most people will just, you know, they could have stopped at Market Basket and bought their food for fifteen dollars, or they can go to Lyers and pay the upcharge at a convenience store and pay thirty dollars. So I'm saying, twenty-five dollars, if you're looking to spend a day at the beach, is probably the normal parking fee to enter into a state park. That's not a deterrent, and it doesn't do anything except for cause pain and aggravation. It is meant to be a deterrent in areas where there potentially, or we have heard of, there being an issue. If everybody in town has their parking permits, and this should be known, never mind in the municipal, in the places, I say, municipal facilities parking. There's only two areas that have the permit required.
Right, the parking.
The recycling center and the beach.
The permits are free, Steve.
I can't, I can't support a hundred dollars.
It's also at the discretion of the police department, being the enforcing agency, though, as well.
For?
For ticketing.
If they're gonna issue the ticketer.
Correct.
Correct. I mean, I get sometimes some, maybe I didn't understand, or the sign could have fallen down, like, that makes sense. The rest of the no parking ones, if they park in a no, I think that that could stay at a 25, but I believe the intent, and I don't believe we will write many, if at all, tickets, 'cause it probably wouldn't happen, but like, when you go through Tamworth by Chakura Lake and you see the sign, basically come up, and there's a left or a right, and it's like, this is gonna cost you a hundred dollars, this is free. The hundred dollar sign doesn't have people going down it, because it's not worth your aggravation to leave your car and then get a ticket. You can't. So I don't think making the sign, if we're gonna spend money to have a 25 dollar sign, or have it say a hundred dollars, isn't gonna make a difference. Except for definitely deter people we don't want to be down in.
Alright, I agree completely, and I'm perfectly fine with having two fees.
So would you like to further define the permit parking zones?
I think your permit.
We have the no parking zones, which takes care of the no parking along certain roadsides.
Yep.
And then we have the zones where parking permit only is established by signage, which literally only applies to the town beach presently. It could technically fall under the, you can't use a recycling center without having a valid municipal facility permit, but that's
As soon as you pull in.
That's all part of the, the recycling centers' rules and regulations. So I don't think that needs to be further defined within this ordinance.
I think by leaving it saying, displaying a Town of Nottingham Municipal Facilities permit where it's required, which we only have two places, but it allows us if we ever had another facility that.
We could add, you know, we probably wouldn't wanna add it at Marston, because if they have visitors and stuff for games and things.
Correct.
So that wouldn't make sense, but, but yes, definitely the beach.
It's really the only thing, and then by having it, by having it at the recycling center, because it's required, it gives us a, again, a deterrent and/or a fee mechanism to deal with people that are dumping their trash in there.
Yeah, no, it's, can't, can't support a hundred dollars.
Untorn. A hundred does seem high to me. I looked at other municipalities, and I was surprised at how low the fines were. Even municipalities that are.
I could possibly support a 50, but there's no way I'd support a hundred.
I guess I would, I would, how many fees do you think we would write?
None.
So I don't think.
I think it's, it's really, why are we even talking about it?
There have been a couple of instances, and they, the people have gotten either hit with no trespassing or whatever, but of people being at the town beach that were not town residents. And due to the issues that we've had trying to maintain access to it. And due to the issues that we've had trying to maintain access to it, if we limit the potential nefarious population that's coming in out of, from out of state, out of town, that has no real uh skin in the game, I think we're just deter. Again, we'll have to have another hearing, but I believe like the section two, no parking zones can be written as it is, and you can possibly put the fines for section two would be the twenty-five dollar range, and then section three, permit parking, you know.
So split, we could split the penalty section two.
I could live with that.
No parking zones and permit parking zones, and have separate penalties.
Yeah, you could have it separate down there, so.
I think that makes the most sense under penalty.
Okay. I can clean that up.
And then I'll just read how the permit parking reads now, section three, where official signage posted designates permit parking only. No person shall stop or park a vehicle in the designated area without properly displaying a valid town of Nottingham Municipal Facilities Permit. Select Board shall have the authority to determine the specific locations for permit-only parking and to establish eligibility requirements, issuance procedures, and associated fees for such permits. And that allows it to be open. My question about it saying permit parking only, currently when you, I don't know what it says over at the beach, but at the recycling center, it says town of Nottingham Municipal Facility, and then does it say?
Required, doesn't it?
I think it says decal required, so I would just make sure that.
Permit?
Whatever our sign says are.
Whatever the permit says.
Oh, yeah, so it's not confusing.
Right, well, if the sign says decal required, then this should say in areas where decal is required, like the the verbiage needs to be correct.
And yeah, consistency is important, and um, has legal looked at this at all?
No, it was an ordinance that was in effect, um, it was actually enacted back in twenty fifteen? Originally two thousand one, amended two thousand nine, two thousand fifteen, and now on the table, so I am happy to put it before legal counsel if you would like.
Good, no.
Are there also?
I don't know if we need to.
No parking zones by the, what do we call it, dry well?
We spent enough money on legal.
Right, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so the, the sign at the beach parking area states, warning, permit parking only unauthorized vehicles will be towed at vehi- at vehicle owner's expense.
So do we even have?
Isn't that deterrent enough?
Well, it says where.
I think it is.
Official signage postage, posted designates permit parking only, that falls under there. We're just adding another.
If we wanna start taking them, because we're not.
Well.
Let's be honest.
If, I would say the difference.
We're not, though.
The, the difference between the two, though, is right now, the current policy is only for. Okay.
It does talk about.
It talks about the permit parking.
And that's what I had said on the long.
But the, about the, the, you know, either issuing a ticket and or towing is that the ticket could be there while they're there, or as if you say, we're gonna tow you, then.
And who's gonna issue the tickets?
The police, if they're there.
Yeah, they need to.
The, the intent, I get, is to have readily um easily determined signage that deters people.
So you don't care if you collect a fee or not?
I think.
I mean, hopefully, we don't have to collect any fees.
We're just trying to deter people.
We wanna make sure that they don't.
You know, our beach person doesn't have to deal with it, other Nottingham residents don't have to be there and be like, oh, I gotta call the police because these people here that shouldn't be here, or right, there's not enough parking, and we see three Massachusetts plates, or and then even then, if they're with somebody that's allowed to be there, which does this permit parking? Because we said that the beach is open to.
They should go with their.
Nottingham residents and guests.
Go on the same car.
But not in a separate, unpermitted car.
Well, that's, that's what they should, they permit parking means they have to go with a permit car.
Okay, I'm just making sure we're covering yourselves in a way that people are like, well, you said that could bring family and friends, they're here with me under my permit.
Right, yeah.
But no, you can't bring in a slew of cars and friends.
Five cars from Massachusetts, because.
And due to the very heavy usage down there, too, we need to reserve parking places for Nottingham people.
Yep, I mean, the, no, I think that the, during the week has been very nice, I don't know what the current attendance has been, I'm sure the weekend hasn't been.
Well, the weather's been terrible.
Super high where no, everybody's getting drenched.
Yeah, it hasn't been the greatest beginning, I don't think Steve and I have seen too many people down there.
I haven't seen anybody.
Right, no, I haven't seen that.
I've seen one car come out when I stopped down on a random day, I don't know if they actually got out of that car.
Free people one day, but it's cold, it's, you know, rainy.
This, this week might be different, definitely the weather is gonna.
Oh, yeah, when the weather gets better, and the kids are out of school, too.
Right. They're not out yet, are they?
No, 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 but when they are, I mean, I think we'll see an uptick.
Co-Browns have their graduation, and so the older kids are out. Starting this week, I think Co-Browns out, and then the following week Nottingham will be out a week.
I think it's when the little guys are out that.
Right, that's when it'll really get popular.
So do we have any other? We can, Tim should be here for the next meeting, we can wait and get some more.
Right, but I, I think.
You gotta wave in.
I think splitting the penalties is a good idea.
I'll update it and update the documents that are on the website and.
And just make sure, too, that the recycling center, either we have to get a sign, I just want everything verbiage to be clear, and to be like, well, I didn't understand that sign, I want it to just be very clear.
Okay.
And so the next, this one requires um two. And the second public hearing will, it's not in this document, is it?
It is, it's on the second page, Monday, June, I'm sorry, it's Monday, June sixteenth.
June sixteenth, not nineteenth?
June sixteenth, June sixteenth at seven P M.
Third Monday.
It's gonna be right at seven?
Yes.
Not at seven thirty?
Correct.
All right, so in case they couldn't hear, the continuation of the public hearing for the amendment to the parking ordinance, Monday, June sixteenth at seven P M.
Just.
Yes.
Technical, so we actually close?
It's gonna change.
So we actually close this public hearing and then.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I see, yes, we're, we're closing the first public hearing, and we'll have the second public hearing.
Seven forty-six.
Correct.
Did, did we actually make a motion to um waive the fee for the Purple Hope?
You want? We haven't finished the special events policy, because she's gonna be possibly updating, so um, if, we can just handle that now.
Started discussing, I mean, if we go off of skip spaces for the request for waiving, technically, it's not, it's raising awareness for pancreatic cancer, so.
But her continuation thinking that, I think we're fine, I mean, it's, it's for our local family and like the continuation, so if somebody wants to make that motion, did you wanna read that?
Sure, is that appropriate, Ellen?
Given in body.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the application for special event license for the Purple Hope five K on October fifth, two thousand twenty-five, and to waive the, oh, we already did that, actually, um, and to make a motion to waive the license fee of fifty dollars.
I have a second, you want a second?
No matter, you second it, go.
We have a motion, a second, to waive the licensing fee, we've already approved special event license for the Purple Hope five K of the fifty dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Two public hearings done.
That's why I wanted to do that earlier.
Um, signs on town property.
Would you like me to start out with a little history on this?
Sure would.
Okay, um, I was contacted by Drew Stevens and not not really being familiar with the sign that he was talking about, I thought he was actually reaching out as a member of the Conservation Commission, and it was regarding uh the yard signs, the temporary yard signs that are put up. Um, we had some that are privately owned, notifying drivers of amphibian crossing, like certain areas, certain peak times when that happens during the year. Um, Dale is our sign enforcer, uh, so as, as he's out driving around, if there are any signs that are placed on town property or within um areas that they shouldn't be, he removes them, brings them back to the, the office, they sit here for two weeks, um, where people have the ability to come back and retrieve them and put them in approved places, or they are disposed of, so um, he applies this principle to all signs, uh, the exception being if there are any community events, like the Blueberry Pancake Social, or.
The Alarm March?
The Alarm March, or anything hosted by the Recreation Department, you'll see some of those smaller yard signs that are placed over at Marston out here in our um, in front of the parking lot. Um, they're temporary signs, so when Drew had reached out about the turtle crossing zones, I said, you know, this is a conservation effort, and it would fall under that same temporary signage, you know, we're notifying people, so I pretty much gave him the clear that I had the discussion with Dale, and that if it was a Nottingham Conservation sponsored or endorsed sign, then they could be allowed to be placed on town property without fear of removal. Um, I copied you off on all the respond, uh, the responses. And he, his response went to the Conservation Commission then seeking their approval, so I didn't realize that it was for the, the Turtle Rescue, which is a separate organization. Um, the Conservation Commission has acknowledged that they have um supported their efforts in the past and that they would be in support. So again, if we go to the sign ordinance section within Nottingham zoning ordinance, there are particular signs that are exempt from the permit requirements of Article four, Section M, um, standards contained within, so I look at subparagraph B, which is signs erected by or on behalf of or pursuant to authorization of a governmental body, including legal notices, identification and informal signs, and traffic directional or regulatory signs, so I looked at these signs initially as being a Conservation Commission endorsed as a government entity, uh, a government body, um, sign identifying and again, they also fall under subsection I, J K L, I'm sorry, L. Um, all temporary signs shall not exceed a total of sixteen square feet in the area may be displayed not more than two weeks prior to an event, such signs shall be removed within two days after the event is finished. Again, these are um placed at key periods throughout the year when obviously turtles are mating and.
Yep.
So I'm putting this out to public just because I don't want it to go too far, I think there has to be certain constraints, and I think with these turtle crossing signs in particular, they have met um, the requirement of getting the endorsement of the Conservation Commission, we do want to be able to save especially the ones that are becoming more rare, protected.
Endangered species.
It's not like they're, you know, a huge sign, it's as small, you can see it within your pocket, it's a turtle crossing sign, yard sign, and there's one over at Marston presently, there are actually going to be a few more in the Marston parking lot, because there's another high-traffic area identified, and I think there's a couple of other areas that Drew was looking to have them placed. So I have tentatively given them the go-ahead that their signs could be placed without fear of removal, I wanted to put it before you, and if you're satisfied that you would like to overturn my thought process behind it.
I mean, do we need to get, I mean, he has like Nottingham Turtle Rescue, but are the ones in town, should they make a sticker that says like approve by Nottingham Conservation Commission or anything?
I think that would be a great way to handle it, because then if Dale sees it, I mean, anybody, any Turtle Rescue can now put up a sign and say, hey, well, they got approval.
Right.
Um, so I do think that there should be some type of an endorsement acknowledging from the town governmental body.
Otherwise, they meet the size requirements and.
Now, what are we saying about the um? That's a big, that's a big sign, the ones.
We're sorry.
The personal.
The amphibian crossing, those were removed, and those are only being placed on private property, yeah, with permission.
Okay, but those ones, if, if they were to ask the Conservation Commission, that person could potentially ask the same thing and have the, the same seal of approval put on, probably with a date, should have like a date or an expiration, just so that they don't go forever, but it seems like some simple labels that can be thrown on a printer that the kinds, something that we know that it's from us, but at least puts a date, and then that.
Yes, because outside of that, I mean, if it was going to be a more permanent fixture, it would require a signed permit.
Well, I think you still wanna have.
I don't even know that we have an application.
Well, you do, but where else would you put it?
What do you mean, do you have to have an application to put the sign?
So there, there, I mean, the zoning ordinance states that there is a, outside of these other signs allowed, they would have to apply for a signed permit application, but I I asked Dale, and I don't even know that we have a signed permit application, so.
I was gonna say, I don't remember ever seeing one.
So maybe we ought to get rid of that.
Well, it's another, I, I have to read through the other section of the zoning ordinance to, to find out where the reference is, and we might have to get the planning board to clean that up.
Yeah, heaven knows, we voted on signage for years upon years.
But Indiana, you're okay with the placement.
They've been approved by the Conservation Commission, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
I think, keep bringing them around, I'm just trying to keep everything.
Wisely, and I'm glad we discussed it in public, so hopefully everybody will understand.
Right, I think that was an important piece discussing it, Paula.
Okay, so uh, we have completed everything up through, we're gonna review action items for next meeting, so the next meeting, there is a special meeting on June eleventh at six P M. And that special meeting is a public hearing for the uh road layout of Channel Street. And then the next scheduled, uh, regularly scheduled.
That's, that's, this, this group is meeting?
Yes.
We have to meet to approve the road layout for Channel Street.
Wow, that's a separate thing, it's a separate meeting.
Correct.
But a week, is that?
Wednesday.
It's Wednesday, it's consistent with planning board, right?
Mm-hmm, it's.
We're meeting.
We're meeting prior to planning board meeting that evening.
And that was just due to the timing to get that approved for the planning board and all the other things that they need. Uh, regularly scheduled, um, Board of Selectmen meeting on June sixteenth, so it'll be public hearing number two for the amendment to the ordinance to prohibit parking on public ways, um, the Marston conceptual update, and a review of town-owned properties. So I think a couple of those have popped up, and then like what we wanna do with them, so hopefully we'll have, is Dale taking a review on those before him?
I have to connect with him and ask that he does, but that is my plan, is to at least have him visit the properties and give me a status update on each.
And I'm not worried about the collection of what, well, we need to come up with a plan between now and potentially the next meeting for the group of them that were inside of Cedar Waters, like what we wanna do with that, because that's obviously a a large portion of little things that we own, which were put back to us, but we don't, it's not even on the land, it's on the structure, and half the time the structure's not even there, so it's like.
Right, why are we still, why is this still on the?
They gotta just be processed and cleaned up.
It'll go away.
And then uh, most of the other properties are kind of small and non-conforming, so.
Right, we don't own any property in Cedar Waters, it's just the structures.
We do, we actually own a strip of land before you get there.
How did that happen? Before you get into Cedar Waters?
No, not before you get into Cedar Waters, it's before you go down to their beach. It's like a very narrow strip of land alongside the road. I don't know if they have a boat launch, I've never personally been inside Cedar Waters, so.
Wait, 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 so.
We own land on their land, we'll have to, we'll have to have that one clarified when we talk about it next time.
Yeah, because it was like gated and, so they were gating us out of our own property?
That's correct.
Um, so that's for the June sixteenth meeting, so again, Dale's gonna.
Also have, um, I'll add on there the special event license policy updates.
Yep.
And I think that was it.
Yep, um. And again, to shout out for a PLIA meeting on uh June fourteenth, um, which will have. the, uh, dam engineer, will come and discuss the issues with that. Actually, I wanted to just back up and talk about that quickly. I'm sorry, you were talking about it, but, uh, the dam letters talk about like, um, the first one, um, like any, uh, emergency action plans or anything, do we as a town have to have anything, do we have to notify people downstream, like
That would be, so it's, that would be the state's emergency action plan, but it is something that we would address in our local emergency operations plan, which is subject for update. Um, I think we're overdue on that one as well. We did the hazard mitigation plan last year, but that's the next one. So we would identify problematic structures or things like that that would create
So let's
Activation of our emergency operations center, that would be one of them.
So can you take an action out of this to meet with the, um, FON and
Yeah, we have to, we have to
All the different heads, but let's have a, so that we can either review it at our next meeting or at least have an update of where it is.
I, I would almost guarantee that it's already included in the operations plan, that's already in effect. I, I would have thought that it would have been identified, usually your dams and dikes are
Yeah.
Because of impact on their failure, but
Right, now that they're saying that they're in poor condition with, I'm just saying with the elevated risk, can, I'm just asking, let's put that as a review topic so we can talk about it this next meeting and make sure
We did address it in the hazard mitigation plan as well, I remember.
Okay, well, if we at least Bring it up, and then we can discuss to people what, they can hear what we have to say and at least
Right.
Feel better about
Much we got on that meeting agenda already, or should we put it on the following?
I don't think it's going to be a super long topic. You'll just tell us like, our plan is this, our plan is that, but we should make sure we're reviewing it. The state's obviously taken, uh, both, uh, the Drownstike and Drownstam have taken us, per their thing, quite a degradation, so we should at least
It's their problem.
It's, well, it would be our problem. They'd be like, hey, it broke, and then we're going to be like
Well, it'll impact the
It'll impact us, not our problem, but it'll be our, impact us.
Right.
I think it'll have a
Beach, and that's, that's the property, you know, it's the dam right there.
I do, I, that is a good thing to talk about in public.
Yeah, so it's at least, it's just prudent to talk about it. The state's saying it's higher issue, they'll bring some stuff up. We might have something new from the P L I A, and then we can at least discuss if we need to do, and if it's nothing, it's more than a five.
So it's our dam by the beach, and I guess, and the dyke's on the other side of the beach, so the beach is in between those two.
Correct.
And then the other one that had issues was, what was the other one that had issues?
Burnhams.
I don't know.
Oh, Dolph.
Oh, that was, oh, Dolph, and then Burnham's, like, or it has been dismantled, right, yeah.
The state looks at, the Tuckaway Lake with two dams, Drowns and Dolph, and then two dikes, a Gulf Cove and the one, uh, near
Drowns.
Yeah, that one's Burnhams.
So, and there was this town, the state is
Burnham's gone. So, so we had more, we had the Burnhams Dam as well, but that's the one that they pulled out.
That's the Beavers one.
It was a dyke, right?
Yep.
It was, well, technically it was a dam, but
They called it a dyke.
Yeah, because
I don't know. It's gone, anyway.
It was a Beavers Dam.
For practical purposes. With that, well, uh, we're going to be adjourning to, uh, non-public. Um, once we exit non-public, we'll be concluding our regularly scheduled meeting, and
Public comment?
Yes, sir.
You want, you want me to get up?
I think you're loud enough right there, Steve.
Close enough to the mic, I think.
I want to invite you all, again, it's a very incredible event, that two hundred and fifty years ago, the Battle of Lexington and Concord occurred. That was the really beginning of the American Revolution, even though we could have stolen when we took for William and Mary the year before, but we never got credit for that. We only stole the gunpowder, but no one was killed. So what happened is that they sent out riders throughout New England to let to know the redcoats were marching on Lexington and Concord. When one arrived in Nottingham on that Sunday, with, it was, the battle was on April nineteenth, which is Patriots Day in Massachusetts and Maine. When the troop, when the rider arrived at Nottingham Square, General Dearborn, future General Dearborn and General Sully got together sixty militia, and at that point, they marched in twenty-four hours to Medford. Incredible, think about it. You can't do it nowadays, even especially with traffic, anyways. When they got to Medford with five M's, the Battle of Lexington and Concord was over, then many of them stayed on. Twenty-six residents of Nottingham participated in the Battle of Bunker Hill. So we're reenacting the Nottingham, Celebrate Nottingham Committee is reenacting that Alarm March on June seventh at nine o'clock at Nottingham Square. They're going to be, the militia's going to be drilling, and then there'll be some wreath laying, and we invite the secret, uh, board of, one of you, or Steve, or to make some comments. We have a proclamation from the governor declaring that event, and then we march after the Alarm March. A woman is going to ride up on a horse saying that British have attacked Lexington and Concord, and they are then going to march the militias, this, and anyone assembled is going to march all the way to Medford. No, not quite, they're going to march to the Epping Town Line, and they will be driven by bus back to Nottingham Square, where they'll have a, uh, fire a gun salute to General Sully, who's buried behind the cemetery o- off Ledge Farm Road. So this is all on June seventh, and you're all invited, and Nottingham is invited.
Excellent, thank you, Steve. Anything else for a public comment? Or a motion?
Did it turn us off already?
I did not shut it off, I don't know what happened.
I think we're still on the YouTube.
We are still live on YouTube, correct.
Somebody like to make a motion, move us into non-public?
I was just real loud in here.
I will make a motion, uh, to move into non-public per RSA ninety-one, A, colon, three, Roman two, which ones, which letters?
B, D, L.
Um, subsection, or section B, D, and L.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call vote.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Daggett.
Aye, Matt Sherwin.
Aye, Charlotte Feif.
Thank you, Nottingham, and, uh, have a good evening.